Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
It is August 21st, 2025. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners in Johnson County, Kansas. We are here today for a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners at this time. I ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. All are present. If those who would be able, would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you would join me in checking your cellphone or any other noise-making device that you may have brought with you today and ensuring that it is turned to silent or turned off, we appreciate your cooperation. We'll start today with a public comment portion of the agenda. It's an opportunity for speakers to address the Commission on Business that does not later appear on today's agenda. If you do wish to speak on an action item, we do ask that you register with that action item in advance. If you happen to speak on an action item during this general public comment session, we're going to ask that you refrain at this time. When you do come to the dius, we ask that you state your name and the community in which you reside here in Johnson County. Comments are limited to two minutes. There's a clock that'll appear on either side of the dius that'll assist you with that time limit. If you happen to go beyond the two-minute time limit, we will ask that you conclude your comments. We do ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are personally offensive, impertinent, profane, or slanderous, and please refrain from the use of offensive or intercourse language that would insult or demean any person. If we stray into that kind of public comment, we will provide a warning. If it continues, we will ask that you step aside from the dius. We do allow public comments virtually, so therefore I will ask the Clerk when we can call on our virtual public commenter. Thank you very much. First is Cassie Woolworth.
Good morning. It's Cassie Woolworth. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Fantastic. Hey, thank you all for your time last night. I really do appreciate that. I'm sorry I had to leave, but since I wasn't elected, I didn't have to stay. So anyway, thank you all for showing up and thank you all for coming. I'm going to reiterate my love of Johnson County. Johnson County, Kansas has been consistently recognized across the wide spectrum, from digital innovation and public safety to cultural excellence and health leadership. These awards underscore the county's commitment to outstanding governance, services, and community well-being. I love living here. Taxes are not a burden. They are the way we all pay for the freedom and opportunity that makes America possible. Regulations aren't red tape. They are rules to keep the game fair. Healthcare isn't about exchanges. It's about whether you have the right to live in fear without medical bankruptcy. Guns aren't about background checks. They're about whether your child comes home from school alive. Immigration isn't about paperwork. It's about whether America still stands for the promise of the Statue of Liberty. We can tell the story of freedom that's big enough to include everyone. I believe Johnson County is very welcoming and diverse, and it does that. We can tell the story of America not built as a fortress for billionaires and gazillionaires, but as a community where everyone has a fair shot and nobody is left behind. Thank you, Board of County Commissioners, for pursuing that community.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to our in-person public commenters calling on folks in the order that they registered. We'll start with Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. Sorry, I missed last week. I was appealing my 22.15% increase in my assessed valuation for property tax purposes. Down below, you'll see the schedule once again of increased full-time equivalent employees in Johnson County. Two hundred and fifteen new employees in the last three years, a 5.14% increase when the population has increased just slightly more than 1%. I attended the budget meeting last night. Thank you for your presence and your listening. I noticed two tactics, and so this will be unsolicited and unwelcome advice. Number one, you can no longer diminish the significance of your burden on taxpayers. Everything at the margin is insignificant until everything at the margin becomes significant. We are in a new paradigm. There are stresses. There is inflation. There's challenges for everybody. So don't diminish the margin, saying stuff like a quarter cent tax on a cup of coffee is only five cents or whatever. Everything matters. The sooner you realize that and respect that, the more traction you will get with taxpayers. Number two, do not attack the state. Why would you bite the hand that feeds you? Yeah, there are some unfunded mandates, but you get a lot of grants from the state. What about that D-technology fund that's grown to $8 million? You haven't adjusted that. So you're going to have to work with the state. You're going to have to adjust provisions as to your authority to tax. You better realize that, and you better realize it fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Perkins.
Good morning. Brian Perkins here at Curly Riverside in Lutte, Kansas, and I'm homeless. I want to start off by thanking a few of you. Commissioner, sorry, Chairman Kelly, the note you made of "time is of the essence." You're spot on, as we've expressed weekly, and the deserving of getting the housing online is, we feel that. So thank you. Commissioner Brewer, your statement about housing continuum is not complete without adequate shelter and traditional housing, it's true. We can't just throw people in low-income housing units and, oh, we're great. Educating and building the foundation of lives is very important when a lot of people have gotten used to this, this stage of life. Commissioner Allen Brand, thank you for what you said about the, you're still doing the research, like Gardner, Olath, Edgerton, DeSoto needs to continue. I'm here today to ask you to have those conversations with your city, to be our leaders, to continue that, to keep the momentum going, because we, time is of the essence. There's a lot of changes happening in our federal government that are going to limit some things sooner than later, and it's going to get very hard very quickly. We just need to continue that, and I really ask you, please have those discussions, because we got to get the homeless off the street. We need to start providing positive outcomes with shelters, just traditional housing, the right programs, because we're all united. I'm receiving education right now, actually. Thank you to Megan Foreman for getting me in contact with Olath. I'm at a meeting this morning downstairs. I get, I'm learning. I'm green to politics. I'm green to legal world, but I'm receiving education from the planning side, because I want to learn to come together more with you. I want to grow together, and I learn from you. You learn from us on a lived experience side. And there's not a doubt in mind we can do it, because I know we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Kivitt.
Hi, my name's Amanda Kivitt. I live at 137th and State Line in Leewood Falls. I bought my house in Leewood when I was 26. I'm 44 now. I sacrificed a lot for that house. I didn't stop at Starbucks. I don't go to Starbucks twice a month. I made my own Target coffee this morning in my Keurig, because that's what I can afford to do, and I expect the county to do the same. I'm here to ask you to do two things. One, the house behind me at 13701 Manor Road has been abandoned for seven years. No one lives in that house. No taxes have been paid on that house since 2022, and there's been no county foreclosure sale. The city is there probably once a month with the police department, because there's always issues going on, but no one lives there. I can't use my backyard. I need you to do your job, and when people don't pay their taxes, I need you to actually do something about that. The second thing is, I listened to the whole meeting last night online. I need you to understand, when I bought my house in '07, I paid $300,000 for it, and my taxes were about $4,000 a year. It was a sacrifice and a struggle, but I did that because I'm a mom of three kids, and I have a six-year-old now, and I need to keep him in kindergarten, but I also have a college kid that I have to take care of, and I cannot afford this. You are pricing me out of the house that I have busted my butt to stay in, and I am begging you, please, please look at your budget. I work incredibly hard, but I work in a public interest job, and I really need you to please reassess what you're doing. The county courthouse was ridiculous. We don't need that building. There's not judges in there. We don't need all those sheriff's deputies standing at the outset. We don't need a separate child support enforcement. You can do that through the state for free. We don't need the extra fees that you charge us on our cars. This is ridiculous. You have increased my property value to $540,000. I can't use that money to pay these taxes. Please, please reconsider what you are doing. You said last night that Johnson County was meant to be for everyone, but you are pricing people in the middle class like me out of it.
Thank you. Next, we have Charlotte O'Hara.
Good morning. Again, I ask, of what value are these books in the Moms for Liberty Parent Guide? Of what value are these books to our children? I know I will receive silence in response, but that's fine, because I will keep asking. Now, last night, what a great turnout. As Commissioner Ashcraft indicated, a few years ago, the number of people that had no connection with the county at the public hearings was zero, and it is just so refreshing to see a crowd, what, of 240 of which spoke eloquently, begging you, pleading with you, as this lady just did, and you are deaf. Cruel indifference to what you are doing to your constituents is unacceptable. While you hand out tax incentives to big corporations who pay 12.5% of their property taxes that they should be paying, or 25%, or we have a 418,000-square-foot building, or is it 480,000-square-foot building out in New Century, standing empty, which is costing the county $1.5 million just to mothball it. And then we have the 150,000-square-foot building that we are replacing, a building that was built in 1997, at a cost of over $900 a square foot. As one person said last night, shame on you.
All right. I believe that's all the public commenters that we have registered for today. So at this time, we're going to move to notes for the record, a couple of notes for the record. Please note that I'll be signing Administrative Resolution Number WD-25-029. This enlarges the privately financed sewer district and provides for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated lateral sewer district in the vicinity of 6920 Walmer Street in Overland Park. Additionally, I'll be signing Administrative Resolution Number WD-25-030. This is enlarging the privately financed sewer district and providing for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated lateral sewer district in the vicinity of 63rd Street and Mauer Road. And finally, I'll be signing a settlement participation for the target master settlement agreement for opioid claims per Resolution Number 109-21. We do have a consent agenda that has been presented. I would like to move item number three off of today's consent agenda and therefore ask for a motion to, or any other modification to today's consent agenda, seeing none. Would the, would there be a motion for the consent agenda as amended? Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Then, number three is in agreement with the City of Spring Hill. Out of an abundance of caution, I'll be recusing myself from this vote, and I'll ask Commissioner Hanslick to carry this item forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Clerk, would you like to read the item, please?
Consider approving an agreement with the City of Spring Hill for the improvement of 199th Street from Ridgeview Road to Renner Road with cars reserve and federal fund exchange accounts in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
I believe Jeff Vos is here to address this issue. Mr. Vos, is there anything you'd like to explain about this issue?
No, I, there's nothing changed from last week. I can do the full presentation again if you like, but no changes from our end.
Any questions? Commissioner Allen Brand?
I'll make a motion unless Brewer wants to.
I don't see any other comments. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I move to approve an agreement with the City of Spring Hill for the improvement of 199th Street from Ridgeview Road to Renner Road with cars reserve and federal fund exchange accounts in the amount not to exceed $150,000. Brewer, second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Commissioner Brewer.
I'll just, as we discussed this at the agenda review last week, I'll share the same comment I made last week. I was part of the Safe Street for All grant the City of Spring Hill had received to look at streets and roadways with going in, within Spring Hill and coming into Spring Hill. I will note that sections of this road, including the recommended recommendation we have today, were sections that were listed at moderate to high risk, and so certainly being able to address this is a part of the plan. So I'm happy to see it move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I recuse myself.
Thank you.
Six in favor and one recusal. Does that match with your records, Clerk? It does. Great. The motion passes. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hanslick. At this time, we'll move on to the printed action agenda. We'll start with what's number six on today's agenda, and this is Resolution Number 092-25. Brian Johnson from the Airport Commission is here to present this item. Mr. Johnson, good morning, and thank you for your presentation on agenda review. As we consider the item, is there anything further you wanted to provide at this time?
Nothing to add.
Okay, very good. I will ask you to step aside. We do have some registered public commenters on this particular item, so I'd ask the Clerk to let me know when we are good for receiving that public comment.
We're ready.
Thank you so much. First is Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. I note in your budget document that you say the typical commercial property or average commercial property is valued at $2,863,000 in the county with taxes of $17,272. If you look at the $75 million IRB and assume that's the full cost of this facility, then you multiply that average by 26.19, and if they were paying full boat on taxes, they'd pay $452,353 a year rather than $133,649. So this is a $3 million tax subsidy to this entity, and they have a 2% cap per annum. I've been paying taxes to Johnson County for 29 years. I've never gotten a 2% cap per annum, and I never get to pay just 29.5% of full boat. My point on all these incentives is I have never seen in four years of coming to these meetings, ever, an abatement for less than 10 years, or a proof of concept, saying, okay, you say you're going to have 143 jobs. If you don't have 143 jobs, you lose the abatement, or it's proportionately reduced. I've never seen that sort of negotiation or bargaining at all. I say it to some of these people, if you want to be on the doorstep of our huge market, you're going to pay more than 29.5% of full boat. You want to go to Cass County, Missouri, fine. You want to go to Platt County, Missouri, fine. You want to go to Douglas County, fine, but you're going to have the inefficiencies of not being close to our market. So I'm waiting for the day when this county ever negotiates something more than a 46 cent per square foot tax or a 10-year abatement. I'll be astounded when it happens. Thank you.
All right. Next is Charlotte O'Hara.
Charlotte O'Hara, Johnson County. Well, this is astounding. Last night, you had 200 people there, most of them wanting you to not increase taxes on them, and yet today we have a big corporation that has requested a tax abatement of about, that they will pay about 25% of their property taxes. How many people would love to pay 25% of their tax bill? Oh, no, you got to be a big guy to get that. How absolutely upside down. You know all of the legislative post-audits that show that tax incentives don't work, that major, well, the huge majority would be here anyway, because this is a great place to do businesses, to, for businesses to be here. But no, we continue to hand out the goodies, and not only will they only be paying 25% of their tax bill, but they get approximately $3.7 million in exemption, on sales tax exemptions. They don't have to pay sales tax on construction materials. The rest of us do, but not the big boys. You are just absolutely, it's unbelievable. And performance agreements, are you kidding? We have Sanano that you gave a 30 cent a square foot abatement, and that's probably about 15% of the
All right, I believe that's all the public commenters that we had for today. Invite Mr. Johnson up for conversation from the board. Mr. Johnson, let me start with this. This contemplation was originally through a public hearing that approved the master resolution of intent in November of 2023, correct?
Correct.
During that time, there was some performance metric as to construction of the facility, and in particularly Phase 1 of that construction, is that correct?
That is correct.
And has that been accomplished?
Yes, it has.
Okay. There's additional construction requirements pursuant to the performance agreement within this agreement that we're looking to approve today, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like a little bit of leeway here if I can. First of all, I want to say to you, heard a lot of comments about the airport not producing, and I just want to say a few things here. So there's 5,124 total jobs right now. We have another 500 coming at the end of the year. That's not counting what else might be developed out there. We have a record of 94,000 annual aircraft operations since 2024, 226 million total in labor income, 1.1 billion total business revenue. Just to say that we have a completion in 2027 of a $15 million tower that's getting ready to go up. We have the longest runway in the state. I think it's more than the state because we're a national airport now, so I guess I should clarify that with KCI. 30 million in federal dollars came to help with that. Thank you, Senator Moran. And then we have two aviation schools out there, one getting ready to come, which is the K-State Aviation Professional Pilot Program. That should open in the fall of '24. Jobs, 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 revenue, 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 not only including a rail increase that happened this past year that helps keep trucks off the road. So those rails and those carts were put into play. Also, since your time coming onto the airport, you and that board have looked at all the leases out there and getting things up to date. So for somebody to say that things aren't happening out there and this is not working, they're not doing their research. And with that, Chair, I have a motion when you're ready.
I will come back to you for that motion. Thanks, Commissioner Allen Brand. Commissioner Brewer.
Thank you. And Commissioner Allen Brand, thank you for reminding us of the, of the data, that the impact that the airports have had in our county. Is it an expectation of the county and the FAA that the executive airports are self-sustaining and self-funding?
It is.
And how do you do that? How do you get to that?
That is a, a great question, and there's a lot of detail that goes into answering that. However, just simply, I think it's, it's this, this project here is a good example of that effort. If you look at the footprint of whether it's New Century or the Johnson County Executive Airport, that is my playground. That is the only footprint I will have through perpetuity that'll allow me to move the needle forward with revenue in mind to continue to forge that effort to become self-sustaining. So this is a significant step in that, in that manner. If you look on, I'll just reference last week's presentation, there's a table in there that I think highlights the value add that this project not only brings the county, but more specifically the airport, and that's all that cumulative revenue through the lease and rail.
So just a couple more questions. So the land that this is being built on, the expectation is something is being built on that land, and it generates revenue, not only revenue that makes you self-sustaining, but it also economic impact within the county.
Correct, yes, exactly. It's taking the green, fallowed land of, of typical airports and turning it into revenue-producing economic growth.
So to date, does that land produce any revenue?
Only because of the lease transaction that occurred back in '23.
And in '23, that public hearing, part of the agreement, part of the plan, part of what got us to Phase 1, was the expectation that, that what we're doing today was going to happen. That's the discussion that, because I, I wasn't here in '23, so I just want to verify that that public hearing, here as being a commissioner, part of that public hearing was understanding that this was how this project, and these are how things were going to unfold?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, contrary to what one of our commenters said, there is a 21-page performance agreement for this project that's included in our materials, so I just want to correct that misinformation. Thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions. Commissioner Hanslick stole my question in part. I wanted to expand on it, though. Mr. Johnson, could you offer any succinct elaboration in terms of that performance agreement, in terms of employment and expectations?
The performance agreement is similar to the recent performance agreements associated with the New Commerce Center on the east side of the airport. In other words, the, there is data that we collect annually, and then we present that then to the account manager's office, and it's distributed accordingly.
Off the top of your head, though, in terms of employees?
Yes.
Do you have any recollection of what the expectations are?
Well, the expectation, right now, it's data collection, so there is no requirement for a set number of employees. But what we're doing is we're very interested in understanding what is occurring within that business. So we're looking to understand what are the salaries, what's the average salary? We're looking for the number of employees. We're also looking at, at their annual revenues.
Okay. Changing gears slightly, historically, on the west side of the airport, we, from time to time, have had development and have had conversations with neighbors about that development. I was wondering, do you feel that there's been adequate notice, and have you received any feedback, pro-con or indifferent to the development that's being proposed?
There's been really a terrific effort put forth for this project because of the nature, that being a cold storage facility. Buchanan Real Estate Group spent at least, I know of at least one public meeting, I think there were two public meetings, they put forward with the neighborhood groups in that area.
Okay. Last question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Then the, the question of the IRB itself, as I understand it, and I appreciate visiting with you and the consultants briefly this morning, state statute dictates that the distribution and the use of a pilot is distributed by the, to the taxing agency at about 25%. And looking at that, I'm looking at the fire district in particular, but what is the difference between if there was no IRB and this facility was built in terms of revenues going to the fire district versus using the IRB and the amount of money going to the fire district?
You know, you mentioned our friend, Mr. Wimpy. I'm going to ask him to, to join me up here and answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We represent the county as your bond counsel, also joined this morning by my colleague Chanel Perez. Commissioner, on, on the pilot agreement or payments in lieu of tax, under state statute, IRBs, it's a binary consideration regarding abatement. A property is either on the tax rolls or it's off. And so by issuing IRBs and effecting a property tax abatement, it allows for the property to be removed from the tax rolls, with the exception of the up to eight mills of capital outlay that goes directly to this local school district. The balance of the mills are exempted. In place of that, most jurisdictions we work with insist on a pilot agreement or performance agreement that sets forth payments in lieu of tax, and here it's meant to be representative of, of 25% of a full tax bill, and that was negotiated two years ago at the time the resolution of intent was adopted. And so in that Article II of the performance agreement, there are tax payments for the next 10 years during that exemption period, and each year that tax payment is made, it'll be split prorata among the taxing jurisdictions in accordance with mill levy. And so to use some conceptual figures, I think we looked quickly in the math on the fire district's levy, for instance, was something like 10 to 15% of those exempt mills. And so if you take that figure against the tax payment amount in the right column there, that'd be roughly their share going forward. Of course, that's subject to adjustment depending on mill levy each year.
So the dollars then are about $69,000 to about $12,000, or about $6,000 to $7,000?
I'll stop short of making a joke of an attorney doing math in public, but I will say that...
I'm just reflecting on what Mr. Johnson had given to us earlier.
Right, so it, with the facility become, coming online and being fully valued this year, it won't be until January 1 of next year when the appraiser's office would evaluate what full value means. And at that point, I think we would be able to tell you down to the dollar what the, what the difference would be. I can tell you that because the pilots were negotiated at, at 25% approximately, that again is prorata, so every taxing jurisdiction is receiving about 25% of what we, we considered a full tax value when the deal was struck.
Okay, thank you.
So let me ask this, and whether it's Mr. Wimpy or Mr. Johnson, prior to the agreement for construction of this cold storage facility, this was taxed at agricultural land? And so from, from that perspective, what was the tax payment that was being made on the agricultural land prior to construction?
Zero.
So in fact, getting 25% of this pilot payment is actually increasing the amount that's being paid to the fire district, to the school district, to the county, correct?
Correct.
And in addition to that, we are adding much-needed cold storage to the supply chain within the logistics hub that is southwest Johnson County for not only the metro region but for the greater six-state region, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Section 3.1 of the agreement says that the project's going to be constructed, equipped, and operated in the manner consistent with the description of the project herein, and I won't list all of those. But if the board feels in its reasonable discretion that the project is constructed or operated in a manner that is materially inconsistent, we have the right to claim an event of default, correct?
Correct.
It's good to know. Thanks.
All right, a motion, Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt resolution number 092-25, authorizing Johnson County to issue a taxable industrial revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed, not to exceed $75 million for the purpose of financing the construction of an industrial facility located at New Century, Kansas, and to grant an ad valorem tax abatement on the constructed improvements for 10 years, starting at .46 a square foot, and escalating at 2% annually therefore, and entering into a payment in lieu of a tax pilot agreement and certain other documents in connection with the insurance of the bonds.
Is there a second?
Second, Hanslick.
Okay, I'm going to make a friendly amendment in connection with the issuance of the bonds on that last phrase. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Allen Brand?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. So that motion is made by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner Hanslick, further discussion?
Yes, I had a question for our legal counsel. In what circumstances or where does this body have the authority to issue industrial revenue bonds?
I am not familiar with that question. I would ask our outside counsel, bond counsel, to address that specifically. I apologize.
No, that's great.
Mr. Wimpy.
Good morning, Commissioner. I, I think the underlying, there's an underlying statute that permits local government cities or counties to issue industrial revenue bonds. There's some finer points in there about jurisdictionally, whether it's within a city, outside the city, but this IRB or industrial revenue bond tool is the same. Underlying statute has been used with other recent projects near the airport, so it's embedded in statute is the short answer.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I appreciated your comments a little earlier, and I think that focuses on a debate related to tax incentives, and as you are aware, you and I have a little bit different perspective on that, and I understand your argument. The, the challenge that I have is that if you do a comparison to ag, to industrial, you're absolutely right, but the, for me, that's a false argument because the issue is, if this, when this is developed, should it be fully responsible for its tax liability or should it be given a break, an incentive? And incentives, I think, do have value, especially with most of that legislation, most of those initial intents was to address brownfield efforts to develop properties that would otherwise be difficult or impossible to develop and bring onto the tax rolls and to be meaningfully productive to a community. And that, to me, is, is the challenge. Now, I, I look at this one in particular, and there's a second concern that weighs on me. And later today, as we did last week, we had discussions from our fire districts who have been, shall I say, the beneficiaries of these tax incentives that undermine their revenue streams, but at the same time, almost immediately add to their operational concerns or operational pressures. Now, as an individual item, this facility might not have any immediate impact, and of course, none of us would ever want any catastrophe or fire or anything like that, so I'm not suggesting that in any way, shape, or form, but it does undermine the revenue stream that goes to fire services, thus shifting the burden to other taxpayers. And so I struggle with this, Mr. Chairman, and my vote will reflect that concern.
And Commissioner Ashcraft, I appreciate that we have a philosophical difference of the impact of economic development within our community. I think having an opportunity, and the proof is in the pudding of when, there are incentives that are utilized to bring land that has otherwise not been developed in key sectors of economic impact, particularly the airport that already has a $1.3 billion impact on our economy in those key sectors. The opportunity to add, opportunities to add to the tax rolls, which is what we're doing here, is meritorious, and therefore, the impact on the fire district from a financial perspective is net positive. And so while we can disagree, I'm supportive of finding right projects and bringing those right projects to our community for not only the immediate impact to our taxing jurisdictions, but the long-term growth in our regional economy. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair, and I support this as well, and I am dead set in front of helping the firefighters and med. And I think that I could sit and vote no on everything, or I can come forward and help meet with those cities and help meet with when, when economic development's happening and when those incentives happen. So you're looking at the incentives that are rolling off in other communities where there's $0 coming in, and the fire departments are getting nothing, then here is revenue that's coming in. And I think it's key, and I'm supporting this, I think it's important to do this, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into this.
Commissioner Brewer.
So, help educate me, the land that we're talking about, how long has it been within the airport's boundary and responsibility to, and zoned for a development, to, to be able to be developed in the way that it, that it's being proposed?
The property in question today has been in existence at the airport since 1967. It's been fallowed since that time.
So since 1967, has there been, I mean, are people aware, has there been efforts to, to let folks know this land is available for development, it's zoned in this fashion, come one, come all, develop this land?
There has. It's my understanding before my arrival, there was an effort to, to market and develop airport land. We've made a concentrated effort, spending a little more time utilizing some expertise outside real estate firms to help us with that effort.
So we could continue with this land, hoping that somebody will come to the table at full boat in the way and the manner that we want, or we can take, you know, I, I think about development, development tools having to be used very intentionally. I will say, looking at the agreement, I, I would like a fuller understanding of how we approach development agreements and how we approach different mile markers and different expectations. That aside, this agreement ramps us to a, we know it will be developed, it has to be developed within the confines of the agreement that exists. We have a runway of bringing income in that starts at about, it looks like cumulative revenue.[1790.80] We have a runway of bringing income in that starts at about, it looks like cumulative revenue, the page you gave us, and I might be on the wrong page in the previous, it's bringing in tax revenue, I think I saw over a 10-year period, it topped out about 159,000 with the 2 percent year-over-year. I'm looking for the page again. So, and then it goes fully on the rolls, is that correct? That it starts in at that 25 percent rate with 2 percent bump year-over-year, and then after the 10 years, it's fully on the rolls?
Yes, correct, that's page three, yep.
So not using a runway, an airport analogy, but I will, we're trying to create a runway that we know the land gets leased up, we know it comes into play as far as bringing revenue in, meeting the expectations of a self-sustaining airport, and adding to the economic portfolio of the county, is that, are those all the elements that are involved?
Yes.
And we're getting revenue through that 10 years, and then it comes fully on to the tax rolls at the expiration of the 10 years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's a motion pending, and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
No.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye, six in favor, one against, is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Wimpy. At this time, we'll move on to item number seven. This is a consideration of authorizing a contract with Denali Water Solutions for bio solids land application from Johnson County wastewater facilities. Ms. Pekerek, thank you for your presentation on this item in agenda review last week before we considered this item, is there any further presentation or information you'd like to provide?
Thank you, Chairman, no, I have nothing further to provide, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll ask that you step aside from the dais, we do have registered public commenters on this item, so I'd ask the clerk to let me know when we are ready to call on those.
We're ready.
Thank you very much. We will start with Ben Hobert.
Just have some questions. I don't understand on the ranking with cost, I think cost is a defined amount, and yet on the rankings, there's three people who list one for Denali, one person who lists it second, how does that happen in terms of cost? Secondly, it's not clear to me, it said the low bidder was 683,285, so was that Denali? And then my other big concern with these, I see this repeatedly, and I know there's some efficiency, you're not going to go out and rebid something every year, I know that. So you have a three-year option, it's not clear to me, there must be cost escalators in there or something, but then you have another three-year option. And my concern always, because I see this repeatedly with the county, is that you then back yourself into monopolistic pricing with your service provider, because you have extended it so long that anybody else who could provide the service is frozen out of the market. And I don't know of these other bidding firms, whether they also have application contracts with farmers to also spread the biofuel or bio solids. But that is always my concern, and I'd like to understand better the county's thinking on these six-year terms with a major contract, why that doesn't freeze out competition and then result in the county being thrust into a monopolistic pricing tactical disadvantage. Thank you.
Thank you, next is Charlotte O'Hara, who has left. Okay, well, then we will move on at this time to consideration and discussion from the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. I know last week, I mentioned that I struggle with this whole process, but I also realize that it becomes weighing that factor of costs, cost benefit savings versus continuing this practice. My question is, are we seeing an increase in jurisdictions across the nation in doing this process, or are we seeing a decrease? My understanding is that we're seeing a vast decrease in this process across the nation of spreading bio solids onto farmland.
You know, I don't know that I have an answer to that question, I can tell you that bio solids, land application of bio solids is a common practice in the wastewater sector. So, you know, as part of the associations that were members of National Association of Clean Water Agencies, nothing like that's been discussed with significant changes one way or the other in terms of utilities making a decision to move in a different direction.
I just really think that we need to look into this a little bit further and have a better understanding and see the different types of remedies that might be out there. I think my belief is the practice is going to, not going to continue, at least not at a great rate, anytime you are putting forever chemicals onto farmland, to me, that's not a good thing. There are processes that can take care of it. Right now, I know, again, probably the cost versus the benefit is probably too high, my thoughts are that that's going to hopefully greatly reduce, and I just think this body needs to be considerate and understand that we may be needing to look at a different remedy to our bio solids through our wastewater programs other than this process.
Commissioner Myers, thank you for your dedication on this topic, it's an important one, and one that we've discussed not only here, but with National Association of Counties and others, how we work with the EPA, how we work with the watershed groups within our region, what best we can do with Water One and others to keep our water as clean and safe as possible, to keep our food source as clean and safe as possible for our community. So to that extent, I do hope that we are at the advent of changes in technology that can be implemented, hopefully in an innovative fashion, and on several topics related to wastewater, but in all of our departments, innovation remains a key driver for our pillars of performance. And so if we are at a point in the next few years to make a conscious and fiscally prudent decision to change this process, I would hope that this board has that opportunity. So with that as a prelude, can you tell me just generally about this contract? We know that the contract is at a cost not to exceed for a three-year contract period. I don't have the contract in front of me, so tell me about the termination clause, is it a 60-day with notice, is there a penalty provision for this termination, can you describe that generally to me?
You know, I don't know that I have that information, I was looking at purchasing, I apologize, I don't have that information with me. The reason we do a three-year contract is because three years, the contractor has to provide not only hauling and land application, but also storage, because there are periods of time with the weather when they cannot land apply, and so they have to provide an area for storage when they cannot land apply. Three years then provide, A is a way to help them make those agreements with the farmers, because then the farmers have some assurance and can plan for the land application, the fertilizer for their land, but also for the contractor, because they will have to provide an area where they can store these materials when they can't land apply. So that's why we have traditionally done a three-year contract, because then that helps them understand that the dollars that they need to put into that storage, they'll be able to spread that out over three years to do. So, and then, yeah, we have the opportunity to not renew that after three years and go back out to the market should they not be performing, but that's why we set it up that way.
Okay. Commissioner Brewer.
Just a couple of questions, one, just to, just to proffer off to us at the dais and our waste order department, the comments that Commissioner Myers shared last week and this week maybe prompts us to be thoughtful about, do we want to consider a steady session at some point in time to discuss what are the alternatives? We had a public commenter who had a couple of questions, so I thought it would be, it would be good to kind of review that. In our briefing sheet, we do have, because it's an RFP process, we do have a scored ranking process, we have two tables after the general evaluation criteria that talks about ranking with cost and talks about ranking without cost. I know you went into detail last week during agenda review about what that meant and why somebody might have scored one of the firms one way on one table and a different way, can you take a deeper dive into that for us?
I might actually ask Robyn Lines, she's our purchasing manager, she oversees, or her team rather, oversees that process, I think she can do a better job.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Lines.
Robyn Lines, purchasing manager. So with these evaluations, each evaluator is looking at these criteria, and they're assigning a numeric point value to that. Those point values are then converted into the rank, depending on the point spreads once cost is entered into that, can change the ranking order. And that's why you have a one on evaluator four for their overall evaluation, because their spread between their top-ranked firm and their second-ranked firm was so narrow that the cost factor did not change that.
Okay, so you're taking an average of multiple evaluators, you use multiple evaluators because I'm assuming they bring different levels of expertise to the table and gives you a good 360 on any bid that comes in?
Correct.
Thank you. Then a question from Ms. Pekerek, the three-year term with an option to renew, at that point of option, do you do a evaluation on if the costs are still within line with what you would, if you went out for bid again? Because there's a cost to the organization to do a bid, but there's also a cost to those bidding, and sometimes that cost is at a level that you don't get a lot of bidders on something if they feel that the contract that they're going to get isn't, you know, doesn't balance the investment they made in making the bid.
Yeah, great, that's a great summary, you're right, we do evaluate that, so if the costs are climbing such that, we feel like there's a, and we do reach out to different utilities periodically just to see what kind of rates that they're paying, so that gives us an idea of where the market might be. So therefore, if our costs are increasing and we think we can potentially get a better cost by going back out to market, we would do that. But you're correct, we have to also evaluate bidders and whether or not they, because there is a cost to put together a request for proposal, or proposal for these types of things, so whether or not they would be interested in participating in some kind of proposal or not.
And that's why the motion is written as an option to bid and not for renewal, not an automatic renewal.
Say that again.
And that's why this motion is written as an option.
Yes, that's correct.
Not an automatic.
Yes.
And so Chair, when we're ready, I'm happy to make the motion.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of thanks, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to reflect on Commissioner Myers' comment and remind Ms. Pekerek, interestingly, on the topic that Commissioner Myers raised, a few weeks ago, I had sent her a video, a video related to the Chicago wastewater district management, one of the largest in the world, and it was quite an extensive video, she and I have an interesting relationship when it comes to that kind of work, but I had sent that to her, and my recollection, Ms. Pekerek, was they talked about the use and distribution of biomass products, if I can call it that, and they had, they talked about that they had expanded that program throughout Illinois, because Chicago creates a lot of what Chicago creates. So they had developed that program, and I thought it talked about that being a nationally prominent trend. So Commissioner Myers, I appreciate your concern, it's a valid concern, I would be interested in learning more about that, because along with that being a trend, I think you're absolutely right, the cost of removing those particulates, what I had read was substantial, although the EPA had been moving that way for several years, so, and I was trying to remember what the wastewater professional association, I can't remember what their name is, it's something like WEWAP or WAPWAP or something like that, but...
Maybe WEF, Water Environment Federation, perhaps? Yeah.
I can't remember who did that, so, but, and I was going to also offer the observation, I appreciate Commissioner...
Myers?
No.
Brewer.
Brewer. All I can think of is Commissioner Julie, Commissioner Brewer's comment. I struggled with this evaluation form because staff is often counseling us not to look at price, look at the criteria, the performance abilities, and as Ms. Pekerek said last week, Firm B is definitely a competent firm, although, not Firm A, but Delany is our current provider, has functioned adequately, maybe more than adequately, so in that regard, I'm comfortable with continuing the Delany management of this, but I agree, we should always be diligent and look at opportunities to take this back out to the open market, because technologies and capacities do change. So I'm supportive of this, but I do understand the reservations.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, I appreciate the conversation about the microplastics, and I'm certainly not an expert on it, I do, what I have read, I understand, there really is not, at this point in time, a way to remove those from the wastewater flow.
Not easily.
And if there was, I don't, the cost could be very prohibitive. I will say, last year, I had the opportunity to visit the largest wastewater treatment plant in the world in Washington, DC, and...
Is that Congress?
[laughing].
All right, ticking it on the rails.
At any rate, they, that was, I asked them about their bio solids program, and they do land application, they ship it all the way up to Maryland, Virginia farms, all over the place, so I guess I say that because if those large plants haven't figured out a way to do it differently, I'm not sure what we can do, but certainly would entertain learning more, but I'm not hopeful there's a magic alternative at this point in time.
If I may, I didn't get an opportunity to say this last week, I'm happy to share, we have some information on our website, and it also includes links to other resources, including, we talked a little bit about really controlling those components at the sources, and so there's some links to other websites to help everyone understand, you know, how they might look for alternatives to those products, because as I mentioned, we're not actually producing them in the wastewater, we're receiving them through the wastewater. So if we can remove them at the source, then that reduces what's coming to the wastewater plant. I'll share that with you after the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now seeing further questions on this one here, a motion at this time from Commissioner Brewer.
I move to authorize a contract with Denali Water Solutions LLC for bio solids land application from Johnson County wastewater facilities at a cost not to exceed $1 million per year for a three-year contract period with the option to renew for an additional three-year period per request for proposal number 2025-011.
Allen Brand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Brewer and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand, is there any further discussion on this topic? Seeing on with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Commissioner Faust.
I.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against, is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Thank you so much and thank you, Ms. Pekerek, for the presentation. At this time, we'll move on to a manager report from our county manager, Ms. Post Oak Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. The first item we have is a follow-up from last night's public hearing. I'll ask Robyn Symes to come forward, the Director of Budget and Financial Planning, to give us a summary of the comments from last evening.
Good evening, Robyn Symes, Budget and Financial Planning. The public hearing was held last night, it was in a different location at the Olathe Conference Center, just to allow additional space for residents to be able to come in and speak. I do want to thank, before I give any comments, I want to thank DTI, especially Alberta Lopez, Sean Nealon, and Isaac Stewart, and then also Megan Johnson and Budget Staff for all of their efforts to help make the event successful. We've already heard some additional comments, if we have it there or somewhere else in the future, then we'll make sure and make any changes that the Board or other people may have for us. There were approximately 220 residents present and there were about 45, 47 that actually spoke during the meeting. Some of the comments that were made were opposition to tax increases, they expressed concern with rising expenditures and also higher reserve amounts, and they also talked about the impact of property tax increases on homers, especially those on fixed incomes. We also heard about increase in expenditures, or sorry, increase in positions, and then also a tight budget adoption timeline and a little more transparency or availability for comment during the process. Some speakers opposed the budget due to concerns about economic development projects and their impacts on affordability and homelessness. Then we also did have some in support for mental health services, aging services, and then also the libraries. As we noted during the public hearing, the Board met six times for department presentations this year. We held five budget open houses where Commissioners were present to hear from the public and of any concerns or what residents may have opinions on the budget. There were 50 residents who attended those five open houses. On the Johnson County website, there is budget information on the current and previous year budgets, and there's also a budget, a new budget guide that we've put out there to help explain the budget process. And then residents also have the opportunity to reach out to Commissioners individually to discuss any concerns that they may have on the budget. So at that point, at this point, that's my summary for last night, I know it was just last night, sometimes we have some follow-up information. If there are any additional questions that the Board would like us to respond to, we can always prepare that information and get it to you before next week.
Thank you. While I suggest that we keep comments to our Commissioners' comments, if we so choose other questions for Ms. Symes at this point. Okay, Ms. Symes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to move on? Okay. Next item is the Siri report, this is the August edition, so most of the indicators are through June 2025. Year-to-date, the unemployment rate is virtually the same as last year, this time from, at 3.7% compared to 3.6 the previous years. And we saw a 10% increase in both the single-family building permits and the year-to-date single-family home sales. The retail sales, we did see a 4.6 increase through May of this year compared to last year. So with that, Chairman, I'll move on to our final item, and that is highlighting another NACO award, and I'll ask Mitchell Walker to come forward, our Deputy Director of HR, and Sherry Klosterman, Senior Training and Development Specialist with HR. And the program that we're hiding, highlighting today is the work on our culture for high-performance organization, leadership empowers all people. Doesn't matter what your title or your position in the organization, you have something to contribute and it's the work around that, that ultimately with the end goal is to provide the quality services to our community. And so Mitchell and Sherry will share some highlights.
Thank you, Penny, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mitchell Walker, I'm the Deputy Director of Human Resources. With me today, I have Sherry Klosterman, she is our senior training, one of our senior training and development specialists. And we are honored today to accept the NACO award for personnel management, in personnel management for the Leadership Empowers All People program, which you will here refer to as LEAP going forward in the presentation. There we go. And so you've all probably heard the saying, culture eats strategy for breakfast, right? We know that you can implement the best strategy, but if your culture isn't prepared for that, then it's not going to be successful. So when you think about Johnson County's culture, you do a quick Google search, what do you see? The first thing that comes up is that leadership is a responsibility shared by all. That's something that Penny's mentioned already. We also see that we empower employees regardless of title or position to exercise leadership. She stole a little bit of my thunder, but that's okay. You'll also see on here, higher performing organization, or HPO as we call it, that we believe in continuous constant improvement to create innovative and creative ideas for solutions that are facing our community. We believe in it so much, we've embedded it in our pillars of performance, our mission, our vision, and our values. This is who we tell the public that we are, who we tell our employees that we are, and who we tell future employee, employees that we are. So this is where LEAP lies, in the crossroads of two fundamental aspects of Johnson County, culture and HPO. It's designed to instill our culture in employees so that they bring the best of their uniqueness to the county to help us solve problems that we're dealing with every single day. It is designed to help take those disparate voices and bring innovation and creativity rather than conflict so that we can address problems that are unique and new to us and change every single moment. So for a little bit deeper dive into the program, I'm going to welcome Sherry Klosterman to the podium.
Good morning. Sherry Klosterman, Senior Learning and Development Specialist with Human Resources. LEAP was established in 2012 and ran for eight years until 2020, when the program was temporarily suspended due to COVID. In 2021, we initiated the redevelopment of the program to meet the needs of the organization while still maintaining the core foundational content and philosophies. The program underwent a complete redesign to enhance interactivity, broader accessibility, and modernize delivery methods. Following the successful pilot in '22, the program officially launched at the end of the year and beginning in '23, it was expanded to all employees and has been offered one to two times per month since. Some key components of the LEAP program are, one, the cohort model, which fosters participation across many departments, agencies, and offices. This encourages communication and collaboration among groups that might not otherwise interact with one another. It drives innovation and provides opportunities to learn how other DAOs function, deliver services, and approach problem solving. We have dedicated sessions that are based on role. Three-day is targeted for non-supervisory staff, while five-day is targeted for supervisors and managers, which includes all of the concepts from the three-day, but also explores many facets of leadership and how these impact our organization. Our sessions include 13 modules, which we'll talk about on the next slide. Both sessions include a final project, which is designed to incorporate learning from the week into practical applications of skills. This helps to prepare them to implement these skills once they return back to their daily roles. The final project for the five-day requires participants to identify real-world problems or current issues in their DAOs that they're facing and challenges them to find solutions for them. We also have LEAP resources that are available on Inside JOCO and are designed to sustain our LEAP principles and our culture by helping to facilitate those meaningful discussions and engaging conversations and activities within their teams. These resources aim to foster the collaboration, creativity, and productivity of our staff. A few examples of these resources include the Five Components of Emotional Intelligence, our Growth vs. Fixed Mindset, and Franklin Covey's Time Matrix. This is just to highlight, a few highlights of our 13 different modules without including all of the full information, but all of our modules and sessions range from one to three hours in length. Essentials in an HPO defines what a high-performing organization is and why Johnson County strives to be high-performing. It defines shared language that includes leadership at all levels, Q2 time, common purpose, and creating that culture where we truly want to leave our community better than we found it. The Myers-Briggs Type Indicator, or the MBTI, explores several self-awareness and examines how stress, crisis response, and communication influences our leadership. Emotional intelligence, or EQ, is critical to understanding emotions and their impact on individuals, teams, and the organization as a whole. Teamness, which yes, is a made-up word, however, that is Johnson County's concept that focuses on understanding team dynamics and fostering success while acknowledging that we are all part of one team going toward a common purpose where we share our successes and our challenges collectively. Creativity emphasizes creative and innovative thinking, helping participants to develop those bold ideas and transfer them into more actionable solutions. Parallel organization, which is unlike traditional committees, parallel workgroups are intentional and bring together employees from across the entire organization at all levels of the organization to work outside the hierarchy on problem-solving and process improvement. This does empower our individual, individuals to drive change from where they are in the organization. In the final four, these are targeted at people leaders. These sessions guide them in team-building environments that truly embody those LEAP principles and intentionally creating the desired culture that they would like to see. With that, I will hand it back to Mitchell.
As you can imagine, this program takes a lot of hands to make happen, so I want to take a little bit of time to recognize some of those people. Sherry is the primary manager of this program, without her, the wheels would definitely fall off. She's supported by our organizational learning and development team, Teal Goller and Sue Crew, who also teach modules within the program. As you can see here, LEAP alumni are a core part of this program. They take on additional time on top of the heavy workloads that they already have to come back and teach within the program, using real-life examples to communicate the LEAP principles. We currently have 42 instructors representing 16 departments and nine logistics personnel representing seven different departments, so that countywide response is very useful. The executive leadership team is also a member of our volunteer base, they come in and show that this program is believed in from the top down, not just from the bottom up. And then lastly, Penny comes in with every class and talks about navigating change and the important of emotional, importance of emotional intelligence within leadership. So thank you for that, Penny. As you know, it is traditionally hard to really measure the outcome of the ROI of a leadership development program, so each year, we review our outcomes to see if we need to add any new ones. Right here, we have some of the traditional outcomes, how many people have attended the program. Almost 37% of our population has gone through the program since its relaunch in 2022 with an average rating of 4.65 out of 5, those are very good numbers. The alumni support is another reasonable outcome, people seeing the value in the program, coming back to add to it. You'll see that we have the final project ideas here, this is just a small selection so that you can see kind of what people come up with. It ranges from personnel management to countywide initiatives built on efficiency and effectiveness. This year, we've added a couple of new outcomes, employee engagement. These are a little more distinct quantitative measures. You can see here that those who have attended the five-day program have an almost 10% higher engagement score than those who have not. Even the three-day program has a higher engagement score, so that shows that this program is linked to employee engagement. And then we've started conducting post-graduation surveys, where 58% of surveyors have implemented these principles back within their roles after graduation. 58% is great, but there's always room for improvement, so we believe in HPO ourselves, so we're looking at increasing that year over year. And then another perhaps more esoteric outcome, after 2018, the county didn't have any NACO awards again until 2022, where we had one. And then in 2023, we had another award. Beginning in 2024, we started having multiple awards again. These awards are based on work that happened in the year prior, and in 2023 was the first year-long implementation of the LEAP program. I do not want to take any credit for what those people did, it is their work, it's their creativity and their innovation. But I do believe that when we start to seed our employees with language around innovation and creativity and cross-collaboration and working with other departments, that creates a spark in our culture that causes people to start thinking about things differently and in bigger ways. So the future of LEAP, every year, we go through and we look at the program, it needs to stay agile, agile to continue meeting the needs of an organization this size, we will do that again this year. We're looking at deepening our project tracking for the final projects to see what actually gets implemented after the graduation, and then expanding access so additional people can attend the program. You'll see here some links to the internet pages for the LEAP program if you're interested. You can always reach out to Sherry or I, we'd be happy to walk you through information as well. And I want to end with a thank you to everyone that has helped with this program, executive leadership team, our alumni faculty, Penny and the others in CMO, and even Commissioners who have helped with the program. And the last thing I will do is a shameless plug, if you want to help out with this program, reach out to us, we could always use it. Thank you, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you. Could you go back to slide 12, I believe it was? The employee engagement correlation, that's, that's an interesting statistics, I appreciate you thinking that way. Do you also by chance correlated to non-engagement or disengagement behaviors, responses?
The way that the file is set up, we do have the ability to do that, so if that's information-
I'm just, just curious, you don't have to do anything.
Yep, we do have the ability to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brewer?
In what ways can Commissioners be helpful in this work?
So both Commissioner Hanslick and the Chair have helped out with our five-day program. They have come down on one of our evening events to really share their experience as leaders in the county, opened up the floor for questions and provided an opportunity for those leaders to, those people leaders to get to know you better and, you know, pick your brain a little. So if you are interested, we would love to have your participation.
All right, Ms., thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell and Sherry, for your contributions to keeping this going and all of HR, keeping this moving forward, and it is an effort, it's a partnership with HR and the executive leadership team, but we really focus on leadership at all levels. So we have a number of initiatives that have grown out of this culture work that are probably too numerous to name right here, but I just see it in action every day, anytime there's an issue. Because we've taken some time to do what we call Q2 by Stephen Covey, the quadrants of what's important and what's urgent, we focus on the important but not urgent, which includes strategic planning, team building, skill building. You know, how do we get informed about what's happening in the environment and the community, et cetera? And so those things take intentional work to focus on that so that when the urgent and important happen, which every day, that's something, we have thought ahead, we have talked about it, we have built teams that can collaborate very quickly. So I'm proud of the work that, look, the crude way of HPO is to say better, faster, cheaper. Well, better, you know, improve, constant improvement, faster, you know, how can we respond to or get ahead of requests from the community? And cheaper is looking at the stewardship side of things, which is all about, you know, is woven throughout when we look at continuous improvement. So I'm proud of the work, we probably don't talk about it at a board level enough, but certainly we can, and I'll highlight that more as we continue to make improvements that are tied to it, but it's now part of our culture, so I don't always think of highlighting it specifically. So I will continue to think of ways that we can have Commissioners involved, and if you want to share ideas with me, we can certainly brainstorm on that too. So Chairman, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to Commissioner Comments. Start today with Commissioner Brewer.
Thank you. It's been a busy last couple of weeks, I was happy to participate along with Commissioner Allen Brand, and I'll defer to her to go into more detail. A while ago, we had approved a letter of intent, working with a developer who's developing a nonprofit development arm called Driven Development, so it was an opportunity to bring different sectors of the, what, what brings us to a development, be it the utilities, the developer, cities, school districts, together to have a conversation on some of the bridges and barriers to getting to where we would like to be with attainable housing in our county. Commissioner Myers and I attended a Breakfast with Sunflower House where we learned some of the changes that they're doing and some of the innovations, especially around collaboration, especially really increasing their footprint with all school districts around not only the programs they have been doing, but a much, much more robust program around digital materials and how early a young person is exposed to sexual content in, in not a, so a lot of collaborations in that area. And actually, we asked for the PowerPoint so we could share that with all our Commissioners. And of course, we had the budget hearing last night and heard from many residents and continue before and after the budget hearing to hear from residents, so I am trying to respond to all my residents who have sent in a note, so bear with me, I'm getting to each and every one of you. And appreciated additional time with Chief Chick to learn a little bit more about the, the Fire District in northeast Johnson County and, and their goals with their upcoming budget. And as we know, I serve as liaison as, on the library board, so we had that meeting last week. Finally, part of what we do, those of us who are Commissioners in unincorporated areas, is we are involved with our town- is we are involved with our townships. We are seeing townships that are struggling having folks maybe run for one of the open vacant positions, trustee, treasurer, clerk, or accepting that position if they are write-in candidates. So I have, hopefully, we'll have the last of the three positions, two of the three positions in Aubrey Township have been open. We approved trustee last week's meeting. We should have clerk coming up, and that'll have a full contingent of folks serving out those elected offices. And I'll be moving on to the next township that has, they can see in unexpired terms. Thank you.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Thank you, Chair. So just to elaborate a little bit more on what Julie said, so one of the things that have been important to me is providing housing from the time I was elected for first responders, schoolteachers. And it was exciting to me to see Van Trust coming forth with Driven Development to provide a trust to expand on housing needs. And it's not that we just need housings for that. I mean, we need all kinds of housing within our community. So we had a, and so I've been working with Chairman Kelly and Commissioner Brewer, and I'll share the map with you that I'm working on a presentation that I'll tell you a little bit about. But they, I had our communications checked with to look at the map. And you'll see the map of the third district and the sixth district. There's 65.9% of unincorporated in Johnson County that is either vacant or ready, you know, for development, that could be developed. And so the majority of it is in sixth district. And as you all know, that 1942, when the sunflower plant was in, there was a lot of that land was vacated and housing. So it's a great opportunity to expand on housing. So I'm excited to continue to work with that. And I'll share the slides with everyone. So I want to thank Erin Nguyen for helping with that and also Charmaine Willis, the leadership and professionalism that went into that. So that second meeting included, and everyone from all the utility entities attended that event. So it was an open panel. It was very well done, and if anybody wants to hear me, more than happy to share. But I want to thank them for helping put that together. I felt like it was just the professionalism and organization. I do have a presentation that I'm working on for next week, and I will share those with you. That, it's with Cruz, which is kind of a real estate, mostly women, involved in it. But just the ripple effect of what's happened to our county, especially in my district off of 10 Highway, and with job opportunities that are coming. So, you know, you've got over 4,400 jobs that are going on, that are going to be happening in Panasonic, other companies that are coming in. So the numbers are expanding and just the ripple effect of transportation plan and increasing, trying to get sunflower to continue to, you know, we've cleaned up with the Army Restoration Group, so all that's happening. So we continue to stay on top of that. I also want to thank Robin Simes, and I know it wasn't easy last night. It's, you know, it's frustrating to me. I mean, I hear people come up and speak, and a lot of the things that were spoken are things that are not in our control. And I continue to try to work as a commissioner to figure out how to share that. And I just, it bothersome to me when those responsibilities are put on, you know, those comments are put on to staff when they're trying to do their best and to be so hateful about it. I apologize for that, and I think it's sad when political positions are used to create hatred and bully in a public meeting like that. So, and I do appreciate the other people that came and spoke about all the positive things that are going on and what they're doing. And I had several calls last night, and, you know, they said, you know, we're not elected, so we don't have to take that. So that's why the room emptied. So I was going to share that with my other fellow commissioners. So, and then Chair, I was wondering, we have Resource Act that was completed, and I would like to have a copy by email of Resource Act. And I don't know if any other commissioner would like to have that, but I would like to start looking at that. I know that they're evaluating it, but I would request a copy of that by email.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry, microphone. Yeah, I'd be happy to address that with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft, why don't you go ahead?
Nothing really, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to acknowledge, I was looking around the room, last Sunday was Jim Francis' birthday. Jim, if you're listening to this, I've said this before, I very much respect the progress that you've helped Johnson County and our fire services make, and I very much appreciate the work that you will continue to support those efforts, as well as the chiefs that are here. But it is Jim's birthday, not yours yet. So, happy birthday, Jim.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. This week, I attended the executive roundtable for the solid waste recommendation preview. It's a culmination of, I think, six meetings that we've had over a period of a year. I will be able to pass on some information to the rest of the board. And of course, this is a meeting mainly to try to discuss ways that we can extend life of landfills. And so it's been very interesting. It's one of the reasons why I brought up some of the information and thoughts towards the biosolids that we talked about today. But I think we're going to take a little break, and I'm sure there's going to be continued work with next steps. And so I'm very interested in seeing how that proceeds. And it was very interesting collaborating with the whole region. In fact, there were quite a few more Missouri representatives than there were Kansas. But it was very good to hear and see and listen to some of the commonalities and some of the differences that we have in our different parts of the world. So future reports on that. Also, as Commissioner Brewer talked about, the meeting at Sunflower House with Julie Rodman, the president and CEO of Sunflower House. For those listening that really aren't sure about what Sunflower House is, it's a child advocacy center providing child abuse assessment and education services to children and families in Wyandotte and Johnson County. And being a former teacher, it was very interesting to me to see the progress that they're making in educating and getting into our school systems and providing information and service that's vital. I will say this, there are some, and it was very interesting to me, the new reporting systems that are required of educators today when it comes to child abuse. Some big changes. But they do great work, and I'm excited to see them continue that work. And they're not a large staff, but they do a mountain worth of work out in our community for both public and private education institutions. So it was great to hear and see things that are going on in that manner. I did not get to go to last night's Johnson County Parks and Recreation District meeting because I had other obligations, but they told me that things went well at that meeting, and they were able to survive without me. So, anyway, I didn't want to hear that.
Commissioner Fast?
Yes, I just, you were highlighting solid waste. Wanted to highlight, the City of Prairie Village has done a pilot program for composting. It's a drop-off program at two of their parks, Wasmar Park, Harmon Park. It's an app, and then you get on the app, you open it up, and you drop off. And I was, listened to their, talked to some of the, they have a really incredible environmental committee, and it's had a huge success in their pilot. And so they had previously tried a door-to-door program many years ago, but was very expensive. So I'm really excited that residents in the northeast, it's only Prairie Village, are using this program. I hope it spreads to other cities and that we can have drop-offs all across the county. So yesterday, when I drive to Topeka to work and back, I often listen, you know, to my city council meetings. I listened to Sedgwick Commission, Shawnee County. And Sedgwick County Commission had a very heated discussion about subsidizing the state on their tag office, that they are drawing a line on subsidizing. They are, the commissioner says this is a state-funded. The fee hasn't increased for 50 years, and the state needs to increase the fee. And so they said they need to draw a line in the sand and pressure legislators, and their solution was to defund the office. So that residents would then call their legislators and go directly to legislators and not to them. So that was a lot of heated discussion. They went back and forth. They then decided to, so they give $900,000. Property taxes is now subsidizing the state, and the state legislators want them to reduce their mill levy. So in order to balance services and reduce the mill levy, then they cut that subsidy by half. But I didn't really get, how are they going to educate residents? Because residents are still going to go to them, as we get every week. So I'm not advocating that solution, but I really do think we need to educate our residents. You know, every time we get an email, every time we call, that this is a state function that is not being fully funded. We have QR codes, you know, in the DMV office. Maybe we have an email that goes to them. So we've subsidized $3 million that could be reduced in our mill levy. For Sedgwick County, $900,000. Their financial forecasting looks like it will be over $1 million in a few years. So I've talked to Erin. Erin's going to meet with them. I think they will be, they've already met with the speaker, the Senate leader, Ty Masterson, both Sedgwick counties. So I think they're great partners. They have the seat of power in Kansas, in Sedgwick. So I look forward, you know, at least they were saying that the state should allow them to get more fees or to increase the fees. 80% of the fees goes to the state. And I think one of the individuals in comments just talked about how those fees are going up. We're not getting those fees. So that was very fascinating to me. Also, we had Negro Creek Planning Committee. This, we, the signs are about done. There will be a sign on Mission Road by Ironwoods in Leewood. They're completing it, Overland Park. That sign will be by Kingston Lake. We are working on having an African-American historian, a poet speak at the ribbon cutting, looking at October. So we're finally there. It's been a long time. But the passion of the Negro Creek Committee, the history of one of the individuals, 85 years old, one of the first residents, African-American to own a house in Fairway and in Johnson County. So a lot of great history. And so we're about done, and you all, I hope you all can come.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lot of things happening this week. I wanted to just mention a couple of them. Most significantly, yesterday, I had the privilege and opportunity to sit down with the relatively new superintendent of the Shawnee Mission School Districts, Dr. Michael Schumacher. And we had a wonderful conversation about what are the ways that the county and the school district can collaborate and coordinate on issues that are important to both of us. One of the biggest things we talked about was housing, and he mentioned that they are very interested in pursuing some innovative options to help with the affordable housing issue in the county. We talked about mental health, childcare, and legislative priorities. So I was very encouraged by his reception and his interest in being able to work together. And in fact, I'll be following up with some of the staff and especially in regard to housing, some, what opportunities might be there to collaborate. Because as we know, our schools are the foundation of our quality of life here in Johnson County, and we don't exist in vacuums or we don't exist in silos. So I'm excited about that opportunity to strengthen that relationship with Shawnee Mission School District. Also, wanted to thank Robin Simes and her team and the Communications Department for all their work to set up the budget hearing last night. Appreciated being able to have it in a location where there was plenty of space rather than having people sitting out in our foyer or down in the basement. I thought it was a much better environment for that discussion and appreciated all that they did. Also want to thank Commissioner Myers for serving on the Mid-America Regional Council's Solid Waste Roundtable. Again, the region, we don't exist in silos. What happens to one landfill can impact-
Everybody's landfill.
Everybody's landfill. So thank you for doing that. And finally, I wanted to just mention, channeling my inner Michael Ashcraft, this month is the 90th anniversary of Social Security. And in fact, we are missing, right now, there's a celebration in Topeka that the AARP had invited us to, to recognize the significant milestone in American economic security. The Social Security Act was signed into law on August 14, 1935, by President Franklin D. Roosevelt. And it was the first time that there was any effort to provide some economic security for people as they move into their aging years. And as someone who's just about to Social Security age, I'm very grateful. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hanslick. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. In the interest of time, I'm going to keep the bulk of my comments, particularly related to the budget, to our agenda review and for next week. But I do, like others, want to thank those who came out last night. While we might not always agree on everything, I appreciate that it does take courage and time to come out and to express your opinions regarding the budget, fully understanding that this is not an easy document. This is a complex organization that provides many important services, some as an arm of the state, some in partnership with the state, some in partnership with the federal government and with our local communities. And so while I do not agree with some of the comments, and I think maybe some of the information may have been misunderstood, I totally understand that, but the sentiment is well-received. And I appreciate our continued efforts working on this board to balance the impact on everyday Johnson Canyons with the need to provide these crucial and sometimes life-saving services that we are so proud to provide as a county. And I look forward to continued push and pull, not only with our residents on these specific topics, but also with other layers of government. And to say that we should lay off the state, I think, is not the answer. We need to work with the state. Absolutely, we do. But we also have to hold them accountable, just like I hope our cities and others hold us accountable for the decisions that we make. So while I will continue working with the state, we also need to hold them accountable. And to Commissioner Fast's point, I really appreciate that we have Erin Nguyen as our government affairs liaison. And the work that we've been doing with Sedgwick County, with Wyandotte County, with Shawnee County, with Douglas County, and with others, to identify where we are subsidizing the state is important work, and I'm glad that that's going to continue. And I hope we actually get to have a substantive conversation with the state about a holistic approach to not only property taxes, but how we fund local government services. That includes county, includes city, and includes fire. So I look- So, I look forward to those continued conversations at the state level. Thank you all very much for the meeting, and that's all the items that we have on our printed agenda, so absent objection from our board, we'll go ahead and adjourn at this time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're going to... Then we'll start in with the agenda review. Thank you all very much.